We're going to open the November 5th Selectman's Meeting. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. And we're gonna open the hearing for the alcohol restaurant license for Berlin Hotel. So would you like to come forward?
Yes.
Aye.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
My name is Joe Devlin. I'm an attorney with offices in Newburyport and Boston, and I represent the applicant here tonight. Uh, next to me is Rick Dean, who has the great title of Operations Specialist for the Rodell Companies. As I said, he's like CIA operative, but in the hotel industry. Um, Operations Specialist means he's the on-the-ground person for the hotel operator here while during the construction, but it's also served as supervising manager, regional manager, and other roles within the hotel industry. Danielle Ducharme is the general manager of the hotel, the hotel being built, and the proposed manager of record on the license. Um, if it pleases the Chair, I can summarize the application for you.
Sure.
So this is Homewood's, we've our Homewood Suites by Hilton, which is going into the River Bridge Development at 65 River Road. Uh, it's an eighty thousand, roughly eighty thousand nine hundred ninety-four square feet, uh, four-story extended stay business hotel. Uh, extended stay, it's Hilton's extended stay business concept, which is, means bigger rooms, uh, more, you know, heavy-duty office-type furniture and accoutrements in the rooms, um, a conference room for executive functions, and, uh, you know, some of the, you know, other operations are centered around providing some services to people who are gonna be there for a week to a couple of weeks. Um, so, um, the hotel itself is being built and is going to be owned by a partnership between the Rodell Companies, who are the hotel, experienced hotel operators, and the Senni family, which, you know, and I'm sure the town of Berlin is familiar with them. It has been for a number of years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but they're the developers behind the River Bridge Development. Um, the alcohol service is mainly driven by a brand requirement of Hilton and Homewood Suites to have managers receptions several times a week where food and alcohol are served to the guests in sort of a buffet style. Um, and then, um, they also have that fairly large conference room for executive meetings and, uh, small conference meeting, conferences, um, where they also provide or offer alcohol service to after, you know, meeting, social event gathering. Uh, and then the main service would be room service to, to all of the rooms. Um, again, this is geared towards executives who are gonna be staying there for a while, so this is sort of their home away from home. Uh, they have a couple of drinks while they're watching TV or finishing up some work in the evening. Um, the, the main area, uh, there's not gonna be a permanent bar. Uh, you know, it's not like a typical bar that you would see.
Mm-hmm.
It's more of a portable setup, um, that would be locked away in, in, in behind, out of the view of the public when, when not in use at either these dinner receptions or during the, um, or for these catered conference events. But, uh, they, alcohol will be served from behind the front desk. That's where the control will be. There's a pantry there that, um, you know, you have some, you could have some food. You could have some, you know, dental floss, toothpaste, and things like that that can be purchased, and there'll be a, a storage area controlled there by the front desk, and all the payments have to go through the front desk. Um, the front desk staff and the waitstaff in the restaurant area and dining area are all gonna be tip-certified, and they're all gonna be experienced in the food and beverage industry. Um, 'cause that's what the Rodell's company, companies do. They're out of New Hampshire. Um, they own and operate and have developed about nineteen hospitals, hotels along the East Coast. A couple in Massachusetts and several in New Hampshire. Um, and, uh, you know, so they're very experienced in, in how to make a, particularly this type of extended stay business hotel work. Danielle Ducharme is thirty years old, and she's had roles of progressive responsibility in the hotel industry, culminating with this being the name, the general manager of this hotel. Um, she too will be tip-certified, um, and, uh, we're here to answer any questions I might have, and, uh, hopefully, uh, we look forward to opening in January?
Early January. Uh, right now with Hilton, they, they give you a date based on where they think you are, and by God, you better make it the fifteenth of January at this point.
You're the man, you're one of the managers. You should tell them.
Well, it's, it's not how, that's not how the brand works, no.
Okay.
'Cause they send a whole implementation team, and, uh, you have to have certain things done for them to even buy their plane tickets, so. So, yeah, around the January fifteenth.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to add before I ask the board?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't.
Okay. Um, does the board have any questions?
He actually covered the questions.
I know, I think he did for me too. Nice job. I'm gonna open it up to the public. Bob?
Oh, yeah, alcohol stays inside the premises.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yep, alright.
Okay, any other questions? Alright. Yes?
Dave Litchwell, Rowan Fire Department. Uh, I mean, in the pantry area, there's, on the plans, there's taps for kegerators and so forth? How does that get regulated?
The, uh, can I?
Sure.
The pantry won't have the taps. The tap is for the food area called the lodge, which is the evening reception, and that's a closed event just for hotel guests. So that'll be served with a buffet dinner. There's usually a couple of hot items, a salad, a beer and a wine, and the beer can either be bottled, or it can be a keg of domestic beer. Um, but that's controlled by the person serving the meal to the guests. It has a set number of hours that it's open, and then it closes. The beers in the pantry will be bottled wine, bottled beer. They'll, they'll all be individual containers, no, no draft in the, in, in the pantry. But that's run by the front desk, so you don't go in and, and go to a cash register and out the door. You, you have to be a registered get, excuse me, a registered guest. You pay the front desk, and, and it's for consumption in your room. The rooms all have kitchens because it's extended stay and full-size refrigerators, so.
And it's on the plan. We'll make sure that that's corrected.
Okay. Well, 'cause it shows it on, uh, I was looking at it this morning. It's right beside, like, there's the toaster and the waffle maker.
Right.
And the beer tap is like right there, so, and that whole area is accessible to the public.
Accessible.
All day long, so.
But the beer won't be there all day long. It's, it's locked.
Right.
Um, the keg would probably only be there for the evening meal. Otherwise, it'll be kept in a, a walk-in refrigerator and just sent in for the kegerator for service, and then removed when service is over. 'Cause there's a couple of nights a week that that social does not occur. We wouldn't leave it there for that, for those nights. But you have to have a room key to come down and be a registered guest. You're on the list, 'cause like any other property that has a food and beverage option like this, you will have people from down the street that are staying at another hotel. Oh, you know, they serve dinner up there. But we have a little bit of a, a series of checks and balances to help that from happening. Thank you for your question.
So you have to have a room in order to purchase?
Correct.
The alcohol?
Yes.
Alright. That's good. You can't get people off the street.
No.
Alright. Um, any other questions? Then I guess I would look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Any other, anything else?
Do you, when you sign that, do you want to put that as a condition? That it is only to be for the patrons of the hotel and not for the public?
I think that's.
It's inherent in the, in the service and the expectation, but that, that won't harm us if that's something that you feel more comfortable with, that's.
Just that you stated on the, on the face of the application that goes to the ABCC if you add a condition like that.
I don't think it's necessary. I think that's their business model.
Okay. Agreed?
Agreed.
Alright. So we've got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time. Yeah, thank you very much.
Please come visit us.
Alrighty.
Yeah, stop down and see the place.
On January fifteenth, we'll be there.
There's an indoor pool, so.
Alright.
Swimming isn't over.
January fifteenth turtling, I wish it was more finished, actually.
I bet, yes.
It's amazing what people can do when the deadline lands.
Well, I've been through it so many times that you just know it comes together, but you're always just like.
It's coming together so fast.
The equipment looks fun to pave. I'm willing to learn, you know? Drive by on the way to and from work, and just stop doing catch for you.
Absolutely.
Keep going.
Excellent.
I'm just gonna leave this right here in the folder, Mary.
I'm just curious, you know, the fence was down there. Did the wind actually manage to blow that fence down this weekend?
Uh, I don't know.
The fence wasn't, I got in at eight this morning.
It did.
It did?
It did.
'Cause I was like, wow.
No, there, there was a lot of damage.
I saw the.
That fence went flying down with some other stuff.
Yeah. 'Cause I was thinking how hard the wind had to be blowing to actually blow the fence down.
It was our sign ripped off too, so.
I saw the sign for the, for the circle was down when I was here last week.
Yeah.
That looked like one of those delivery trucks must've nailed it, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know how, how long these nights can go, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay. We're closing the hearing. And we have.
Yeah, it's at seven thirty.
We've got a few minutes before seven thirty.
Can we do any of these?
Yep. Um, we have meeting minutes from nine twenty-four, ten-one, and ten-nine, I believe. Correct?
Eleven-thirty.
And eleven-thirty.
Eleven-thirty.
That's a peg.
Check-a-laka-laka.
Oh, yeah, 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 yours. I'm sorry.
Great, I make that much of an impression on you.
I know.
Appreciate that.
I read the bundle, and I didn't, you know, I did read yours, but then I was only putting down the bundle here. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, there are, oh, there are appointments, aren't there?
The election workers, oh.
Yes, the election workers, um, which you cannot vote on paper.
Yep.
So, how about, um, I'll make the motion to approve Piper as an election worker. You want a second?
Uh, seconded.
Um, anything to be said?
Nope.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then there's June Poland, Amy Grunier, Carol Leary, and Peter Hoffman. Um, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter and Carol, correct? Oh, I thought Carol was on. Oh, okay, she is, alright.
Alright, we have a common victuals license for Noria River Bridge at sixty-four River Road.
Can we both do those, or?
Yep, we can do them both, I guess, and the other one is for, if I can find it on my paper.
Berlin Jennifer, yeah, Berlin Farms.
Oh, Jennifer Sirmack. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Are the, new fees in place?
They are, so for, for both of those, they came in with twenty-five dollars 'cause they came in before I could even reach out to them, so.
Right.
I'll just let them know about the difference.
Yeah, look like it.
Yep. Just one.
Did you get the other one?
No. Thank you.
Alright, we are now going to have some discussion regarding the proposed request for EDC to draft a film incentive and marketing approval. And he's disappeared.
Do you want me to go get him?
No, that's alright.
Alright.
We can call him in if we need to. Uh, well, actually.
He needs to be here.
Yeah, we need to have him here.
We're gonna have a discussion.
What are we discussing?
The film stuff.
Will you come up or sit back?
Come up.
Come on up. So.
I don't remember making a motion to elect me to do anything. I just offered to take it on if you wanted. I've read the, the agenda.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mary.
So you're still willing to take it on, I assume?
Well, if you want us to, if you want us to lead the, lead the fight, we'll, we'll do it, if you, if you want.
Well, I think what we're looking for is like a, like a package or a.
Guidance.
Or incentive to get people to come on. Um, some kind of a marketing proposal? Are you, uh, is your group able to do that?
Yeah.
We're gonna market Berlin regardless. I mean, that's, that's in the works already.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I think if you, um, I think it'll be hard to incentivize a group to do such a big, take on such a big role if you don't give us the keys. That's the way I feel about it.
And what are you looking for in terms of the keys?
Well, become the liaison for it. Otherwise, we, we market, we start a conversation, we turn it over to one of the three of you or whoever you designate, and that becomes, feels kind of productive. I mean, either one is fine. It's not like we have a shortage of things to do, nor do you.
Mm-hmm. Do you have any input, Mr. Wheeler?
Oh, you've got, you've got two of them sitting right, so which one?
Oh, that one.
We need more background. Yeah, we need more background.
As to what we're trying to do?
Hand up key.
No, no, we're, so we're all the, some of the towns around us are, you know, getting into the film industry, that we would like to push Berlin to be able to do that, and want to have some type of committee that could kind of help it get out, find out what these types of companies are looking for in town, so that if they show up at the eighteen-seventy house, you know, unexpected, someone could go, hey, welcome aboard, here's who you call, here's a packet. They show up at Nineteen Carter, hey, welcome aboard, here's a packet. So someone who can take that and put together information that these companies might be looking for, so that we can get Berlin on the map too, as well as Harvard and Maynard and everybody else who's getting in on it in Berlin's missing out.
Yeah, I mean, you had some activity, I guess minimal.
Correct.
But the Devon's facility is obviously gonna generate opportunities, so, um, anything that we can do to enhance that opportunity makes a lot of sense. And evidently, the EDC is volunteered to work on being the liaison. Is that what's going on?
I kindly asked him.
I mean, it makes a lot of sense, because, you know, that, that type of outreach, um, is right up their alley.
Agreed.
And they also, um, you know, are seeking to find ways to get businesses involved within the community and outreach as well, I imagine.
Agreed.
So, you know, it's, it's a golden opportunity for them to participate in the process. So you're trying to decide how much authority to allow them to have.
Yeah.
I mean, how much, I, to me, the more you hand over from the selectmen, the better, um, at this stage. Now, I'd put a caveat in that. At some point, if we have a town administrator who's here, you know, on a more permanent basis, it would seem as though the EDC would work closely with that individual, and, um, they'd generate a lot of the protocol, but the town administrator might very well be someone that would have a, a more active role, perhaps.
Agreed. And I think generally that's.
They're here and.
Generally, that's how it's handled.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
So it seems to me that if you delegate it to anyone besides yourself, it's gonna have to come back to you to enter into an agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So whoever the third party is, EDC, a person in town, a different committee, would have to present a, a proposal to you. I've, you know, arguably created this agreement between the film company and the town of Berlin. I recommend that you adopt this agreement. What do you think? It'd have to be presented to you because you're the executive authority in the town.
We'll only agree to it if you say Berlin, not Berlin. Just saying.
You're playing with fire.
Just saying.
I think I'm doing okay.
You are, alright.
So.
I, I was just gonna make a motion to approve that the EDC take the lead on this, yes.
Seconded.
And can we just add that to keep the selectmen in the loop?
We have, we'd have to.
Oh, I know, but I mean.
They can't sign anything.
Oh, I know that.
So, I'm sure Peter will.
Come back if you have questions.
Alright.
I mean, if there's, yeah, I mean, I think it really depends. If it's a nibble, there's no point in wasting your time. If it's a real bite, we'll, you know, start to, like, you know.
Alright.
Agreed.
We have all the, I mean, the fee schedules and all that are available, so.
What fee schedules?
There's a fee schedule.
Fee schedules for like parking in the tent, parking over the barn, things like that.
Where is that?
We, we'll share it with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did that for this most recent.
Did you have something? David?
David?
Yes, I just wanted to comment, being heavily involved in with the last one, last week, is that there needs to be an open forum that one of the departments that have to be involved in it, with road closures, highway, police, fire, all of that. So, just so, we either need to come up with like some sort of checkoff list that each department has been included and involved with that, so they're aware, whether it's Mr. Hoffman or whatever, that things aren't gonna get, fall through the cracks.
And we've got that right here.
Nope. That, that wasn't on the form, and we fixed that.
But I know we also ran into some glitches, uh, things that Public Safety had many meetings with the movie people, and things didn't happen to work out the same as what was described, per se. Um, so, Public Safety, Highway, and everybody else, we're working together again to review what we just did, see what we missed, what we have to do, as well as think it'd be a good idea for the selectmen to be aware of that as well, that what fell through the cracks?
Well.
What we need to fix, as well as fee schedules and so forth.
Whether if you want us involved, or if you just want to keep us in the loop?
Mm-hmm.
Either way.
I have not sent that to the departments involved.
Right.
I could send that to the departments involved for fee.
Yeah, why, why don't you do that?
Yep.
She'll send you a soft copy of what we have here.
Yeah, and I think your roles are different, so I think Peter's is to go out and solicit.
Marketing coordination.
Right.
And then I'll, in theory, we'll have a package to say, jeez, we've got this possibility for this fee structure, and this is what we'll need for support, I would suspect.
And I did let Peter know that I had spoken with, um, James Holyoke, and he said if you need his help on an as-needed basis, that feel free to call him.
Nice.
Yeah, that's fine, that's good.
Okay.
Alright.
Just quickly, could you, Dave, can you tell us what fell through the cracks in brief?
Just some minor details that were left out. Things that fall into Public Safety, like they ended up with a, a smoke machine inside the building, which, if you don't look far enough down the road, it's gonna interfere with the fire alarm system. It's gonna trip the fire alarm system. Luckily, we took the fire alarm system offline before the, that event happened, and it was being done for something else. So, we were left out of it because all of a sudden, we see smoke coming out of the building. Well, I've got detail people there, I've got police there, and it's like, there's no fire protection 'cause the alarm's off. So now, why is this smoke coming out of the building? Well, if you're not kept in the loop of what's happening during the production, it doesn't work. You know, everybody's gonna be on the same page of what's happening during the presentation or the production of the movie and so forth.
Okay.
Okay.
Portable toilets, if they have enough people, might be an issue.
Right.
You know, just.
I think it's border health, I hope.
If not, we can revise, send it around to all the departments, see if they want to.
Border Health, I, yeah. On the list for keeping everybody in the loop.
Yeah, good.
And approval.
Who's in Jamaica, really?
I was here and I didn't know.
I can tell what it's in. Alright. So we have a motion in a second?
Yep, we have a motion in a second. If there's nothing else, uh, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thanks, make sure you double my pay, okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Do you want double time on the weekends?
Yeah.
Alright, I can do that.
You get holidays off.
Just keep bringing them, people.
You get the holidays off.
Do you want to wait, or do we have something quick for it?
Uh, is this the, no. Is there an earthworks draft?
You were, I didn't draft one.
For the committee.
I think it was just.
Right, it's just the committee, but I don't see it here. That's why I wondered if.
I didn't, we, did you want me to draft one?
No, no, you did.
Oh.
Or we did.
Yeah, I saw something that looked fine.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
It was a, you know, and you saw it and it looked okay?
Yes.
Alright, then.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was quick.
Yep.
Uh, I don't know, we might wanna.
Yep.
Wait on that one.
Number five and number six.
Right.
And number seven.
Yep. Okay. Um, Dennis, you wanna just come, let up?
It's gonna be a long day tomorrow.
Yes, it is.
We have thirty-nine counters. Looking for one more.
Oh, boy.
Bring in snacks.
They get meals, probably, and somebody cooks for them, that's, that's awesome.
Yeah, I know, and it smells really good when they bring the food.
Um, I contacted all of these companies here, discussed with either the owner or the personnel being in charge of a project if they had it. Um, all but one, um, will do consulting or brok- brokerage.
Mm-hmm.
The brokerage is free, even if you don't pick what they recommend. However, if we do pick what they recommend, they ask you to let them be the broker for that or those vendors that are in the plan.
Okay.
So you wonder, you know.
Yeah.
And I asked, one company that did more consulting than, um, brokering, the cooking company, the one that was recommended by Meyer. Um, some towns keep them on retainer for a few thousand dollars a year to take care of COVID problems, recommendations on new things like telemedicine or, um, buying drugs from Canada. They come with kind of special challenges. And that is pretty much it. So, um, there were some minor brokers that, um, had one or two towns. Most of these have at least four or five clients, some had eight to ten. And of course, Meyer has a hundred and fifty, so, um, the biggest one in the country is NFP. They're a major, um, but they have a North Row branch that would do the work if we go forward. The fees are the same for all the consultants that we had from the last time we talked, five to ten thousand, depending on what has to be done. Corporate benefit plans will not do, um, consulting, they only do broker represented, uh, representing. The plan is to move forward, I'd let all the brokers make a proposal. There's no fee, um, it'll bring up different things. Each one I spoke to had a different outlook. One said, boy, you're tiny, you're probably gonna stick with Maya, you know, comments like that. The other one said, we can probably come up with a cheaper plan because the drugs from Canada will be a lot cheaper. But you have to convince your employees they're not made in the back room of some shed in Montreal, which they're not, but, you know, you have to think about things like that. I'd base it on the smaller census which we'll have once the schools are gone. I talked to John Conroy, as a matter of fact, today, um, 'cause he's a little confusing sometimes when he's answering the questions, but he thinks the plan they have right now, um, will be accepted by all three entities. And he hopes because of the good rates they've been getting, to keep it for a couple of years and then look at if they have to save for the Cadillac tax or, um, what have you. So, um, there's no deadline now, try to get it done before they make decisions in the spring, 'cause he's not coming up with one single plan that's different than the one that's at Tohato. So, hopefully the unions like it. I look for proposals by December first.
Okay.
From, from all of them.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I'd allow Maya to provide an alternative based on what might come out of this study, because-
You mean afterwards, or?
Well, during, as I come in, just let them be aware. The only thing against Maya is they only have Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yeah.
And that, you know, some people see as a negative. The, um, other thing is I'd work up a list of major and minor criteria. For example, um, when we were speaking with Mr. Lively, who has quite a few towns, um, happens to have, where Kate's from, up in Ashby, and they're real happy, the rates are good, except this year they're going way up because they had a major claim. So that, gee, maybe they don't have a pool like Maya has, so would wanna have that, or at least look at it in any of the proposals that come in, um, because the rates have been very consistent, um, with Maya, um, and we don't wanna go back to a low ball where two years from now, you're fourteen, eighteen percent, uh, and we're looking for someone else to do the plan again. So, you know, it's a lot of different things to think about. I'd like to assume twenty twenty-two is gonna happen. You know, I've read how to reduce plans from many sources and, um, MMA come out and said, get rid of your healthcare savings plans and try to get as close as you can to the benchmark plan by that time, which we've looked at through Maya, but I'm sure these other plans could do the same thing. Do we want coverage for New England? We've had cases where an employee had to change, she lived in Connecticut and had to change her doctors from Connecticut to Massachusetts, um, but now Maya offers New England and hopefully these other plans do too, which, you know, is the latest thing. So you don't have to go to a PPO to have a doctor outside of Massachusetts, that's the purpose of it.
Do we know if that's an issue for any of the employees?
Um, no, it would've, Kate, Kate came from Ashby and I think the fire chief's from Ashburn, um-
Ashburnham.
Ashburnham, so they're right up on the border, but it was an issue in the past with an employee we had. Plus, the more we appoint people, they may have moved from New Hampshire or from Connecticut or Rhode Island, but might wanna retain a doctor back, you know, where they grew up or what have you, so.
Right, and you never know where the provider list is from, I mean, BCPS is pretty large.
Right.
But you don't know if, if somebody comes in with the arm of Aetna or United Health that your pool might be smaller.
That's right. Yep.
Yeah.
And then you have to deal with, and it's not a major issue, but some people love Blue Cross Period, it's a very good plan, they, they want quality, so would have to deal with that. Telemedicine, that's a new thing. Is it gonna work? We don't know, but we should have, um, the consultant possibly available if those questions kinda challenge us, you know, they weren't doing. Tier Networks is another thing that's coming back and it's gonna be in some of these proposals. For a while, it fell out of favor and only the GIC did that, um, because most people wanna go to the best doctor all the time, so, um.
I'm curious though, where it says like avoid health savings account, 'cause I know where I work, where there seems to be a larger push, because with health savings, you can take it regardless-
Right.
-of where you go compared to an FSA and even though there's a rollover.
Right.
It's still-
You don't get to keep the money.
You don't get to keep the money.
Right.
You know, you leave.
Yep.
You're leaving employer money, employers are happy, but you're not.
The reason I put it in as a negative is if you assume twenty twenty twen- twenty twenty-two will happen.
Right.
You have to include that in your calculation for the Cadillac tax.
Okay.
So, MMA actually is one of the ones that says, try to get out of those as you can, don't jump in.
Right.
Even though, there's nothing wrong with it, it's just how much do you wanna pay in-
Correct.
Penalty. Now, the penalty's gonna be cut a little more than in half. We were looking at roughly a hundred thousand, I think, the last time we talked, somewhere a hundred and twenty. So it's gonna be reduced, but it's still gonna come back also from the school.
Right.
You know, through the assessment, so, uh, hopefully John's watching it over there, um, by twenty twenty-two. A lot will depend on what happens tomorrow.
True.
So-
Does Berlin have an HSA now?
No.
Because, I mean, something to consider obviously with an HSA is, is Berlin as the employer, gonna kick in anything? You know, do you, do you sign up for, I don't wanna kick in anything, but I want Berlin to kick in any, kick in whatever the employer amount is, or is it match? So, you know, you've got finance, you know, the finance folks to be like, we're not kicking in anything, then people might be like, tch.
Yeah.
And I'll just stick.
In those plans, you usually hire an outside company to do it.
Correct.
Don't wanna do it yourself, but, um, the other thing is opt-out pay. So there's a lot of things to talk about. If you don't take benefits from Berlin, we'll give you a thousand dollars a year or whatever.
Right, a defined contribution versus defined benefit, yeah.
And if you set it up right, you can save some pretty good money. If you set it up wrong, they take it and then leave a week after they stop work, you know, that kinda thing has happened.
Right, so you'd have to set up some stipulations around that.
Yeah. So there'll be, um, a ton of proposals, there'll be a lot to go over, but I think it's something that's reasonable to have you be aware of where we're at first of December and then spend the month working it out either with us and then the committee, um, and then be ready for the spring when the rates come out.
So would you be looking at, besides like your HSA and HRA, would you also be looking at your other voluntary benefits, pet insurance, transit, home health, critical, all of them? Accident, AD&amp;D?
Um, most of these brokers do all that extra stuff.
Okay.
Um, the big one we don't have is eye care, that's one of the first ones. If you put it in right, it's free, doesn't cost a town. Right now, you're covered under Blue Cross for your, I forget when, but you can have your eye exam. And the other thing that we have to look at, and I didn't put it on the list, but it's, it's funny, one of these other companies is proposing it now, um, corporate benefit plans, is the connection between dental and major health issues in medical. You know, bad teeth will affect your heart.
Correct.
It will affect diabetes, you know, it's a pregnancy too.
So more of a preventative approach?
Yeah, so we moved out of Delta Dental and into Maya because with the HIPAA laws, Delta couldn't-
Ask.
Say, hey, I know you have-
Yeah, really bad.
Brush your teeth.
Yeah.
Whereas Blue Cross-
He has some floss, he's your Christmas present, he has some floss.
And it's funny because back when we did that, there were a lot of giggles about, well, yeah, dental doesn't affect your heart and all that, but more and more, it's, it's been proven now that if you connect the two. Uh, and the other thing I didn't mention here, but everyone does it, is, you know, gym membership and all that kinda stuff. Very few people take advantage of that, but it's something to think about.
I did, I just needed, I just needed to go.
Yeah. And then you have the very limited, very limited, wicked limited-
Yeah.
-plans, where you go to their doctor period at that hospital and you, you get rebate checks in the mail, and we've talked about that one. I know you're familiar, she's familiar with it from Maya. So that's what I'm proposing to, uh, you know, take a hard look at what we do.
You're saying you'd like to have each of them send in proposals?
Yeah, based on the same census though. You know, this is how many males, females, age, family, single, uh, plan. Yeah.
Yeah, and then you would get back to us by December first?
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, 'cause you could make a wicked cool spreadsheet, I mean, just list all your options down the side and all your people across the top, check, 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 none, 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 check, 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 so you could look at it at a glance.
Yep, and you might want an expert, expert, expert to look at and say, well, that, you know, but we'll see.
Trying to get apples to apples as much as possible?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I want Maya to look at their plans and try to match it.
Yeah.
Even though you're stuck with Blue Cross, they have multiple ways they can set up your particular account.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
It's okay?
Yeah.
Don't forget to vote. We'll be there tomorrow night at midnight.
I already voted.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Dennis.
All right, I don't know, something we can do quickly, how about the approval of the FY twenty COLA?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, I've taken-
You wanna go on, Merle, don't you?
I've taken that sheet out way too many times, I second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, look, and he's not even here to, you know.
I know.
Wow, okay.
I thought they did a great job though on their information that they shared with us.
Agreed.
And I appreciate that they did it.
Yes, and we didn't. Yeah, um, well, tick, tick, tick. Did you all have any feedback about the solar site? The plan re- the plan, yeah, plan reviews, special permit feedback from Z, for ZBA?
Um, I checked with Joe, everything's okay from that end.
I don't know that there was anything specific that had to deal with selectmen. It looked like the waivers had to do with other things.
Yeah, I, I mean, I haven't.
Uh, there wasn't anything, that's same thing, I mean, I read through it quite quick and looked for like action items for us and didn't see anything, so just kinda skipped it.
So do we want to, there was a, a letter, uh-
There's a spiral bound, um-
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong folder.
Yeah, that's it.
There it is, keep going, what's it?
Here's the, the generic letter. Fill in the selectmen, confirm, we have received and reviewed a copy of the proposed site development plans created by Hanigan Engineering dated October fifth for a large-scale ground-mounted solar project located at thirty-three forty-four Randall Road. After review of the plans and application, we have no further recommendations or comments to the zoning board of appeals. This letter's intended to address the requirement under section twelve thirty-five point one of the Berlin zoning bylaw.
Move that we go ahead with the letter since we have nothing to add.
Okay. All right. Tell you what I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna sign it, Mary, you wanna fill it in for me?
Yes.
Thank you. Did we take a vote? You made a move, a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay. So, we're going to open the public hearing for RWJ Beverage. Would like to come forward?
Do you mind if I pull another chair?
Absolutely.
I don't wanna be.
No, we want you to sit at the floor.
Nice to see everyone again.
Hello.
How are you?
Good evening.
Thanks for hosting us again. As you know, my name is Alex Fury, and I'm one of the lawyers for RWJ. I'm here with Bill Kelly, uh, Jim Deena, who's one of the principals, and you've, uh, you've met Mike Riordan. Thanks for your consideration. Uh, we submitted a, a letter, um, on Friday from RWJ, as well as a cover letter from me, uh, with a statement from Mr. Holyoke and, uh, Ms. Muldoon. I hope you're able to, to review those materials that we submitted. We thank you for your consideration, we thank you for your time and your service. Jim Deena would like to, to address the, uh, committee, uh, he has a few words.
Thank you, appreciate it. Nice, nice to meet you all tonight, good to be here. Weather's a little rough getting out here, but traffic, we made it, so it was okay. Uh, I'm Jim Deena and I'm the, uh, one of the three partners, I'm the J of, of the company. My other partner, Warren, was here last week, he couldn't make it, that's what's good about having three partners, in case one doesn't make it, the other one can fill in. So, I was out of town last week, it's his turn to travel, so I'm delighted to be here tonight. Um, and I do thank you for your time to, to meet with us. We understand, uh, how difficult it is in communities today to do the right thing and we know that you take extra time to, uh, to really support your local community. I'm a resident of Massachusetts, I live in Lexington, and, uh, we sent you, I know you've seen several documents, you've seen a letter that, which I drafted last week, I think you got on Friday, and, uh, I just thought maybe just take a few minutes to explain from our perspective, my, mine and my partner's perspective of where we are and how we feel about what, what's happened here, uh, with these licenses. First of all, I think that, uh, we believe we're good community folks, okay? We have several businesses here in this state, we reside in the state and we understand it, we all live in our local communities as well and we'd like to support them. Uh, we think we've done a good job in supporting the community here in Berlin, and we think we have a, a good product, I think we've stood behind that product, uh, we deliver a good service, uh, to the constituents here in this community, and on top of that, I think we've gone out of our way to support the community, which is really how we run all of our businesses. Uh, we believe that, uh, we're primarily in the hotel business, uh, and we know we have to get the support of the local community in which we do business in, so it's always been our mantra, that's why we get involved in the way that we have. The reason why we're here today, there's only really one reason, otherwise we wouldn't be here, is that, uh, there was an attempted, what we believe illegal transfer of a liquor license, and, uh, if that had not happened, I don't think I'd be sitting here talking to you today. Uh, but we believe that's what happened. I think the original applicant, which was the liquor baron folks, uh, they were not following the law and not following the way that they should've taken care of things, and then they attempted to, uh, transfer the license illegally. And I don't think that's my opinion or my partner's opinion, I think ABCC has told us that, right? They have not accepted the transfer of the license, so. And, uh, one might feel a bit bad about the landlord, but, uh, if you read the same information that I looked at, uh, over the weekend, um, I saw that they've already been paid pretty handsomely, uh, at least way, what I read it from the document that was there, I think it was supposed to be blacked out, but it looks like there was a one-point-nine million dollar payment made for the lease of that particular location, so. And, uh, so I don't feel too bad for them, 'cause I think they've already been compensated for it. And, but it's very obvious to me that they're good business people, they have good counsel, and you have to ask yourself, why would they transfer the license in this fashion with all the good counsel that they had? I'm not really sure, all I know is that's what they, they did. I'm not really sure, all I know is that's what they, they did, so. We realize that, you know, communities and government, we have, uh, laws and regulations that we all put together, right, in order to take care of our communities. And, uh, you know, we believe that some people didn't follow those, uh, we did, we've been here for five years, we've been very patient, we really wanted to get a full liquor license when we came to this community. There was one, not one available, we attempted to buy the liquor license, uh, and it was thwarted by the landlord, who wouldn't allow us to purchase it, so. I think that's why we're here, uh, we're obviously very committed to it, we're committed to our business here in your community. And we hope that you think about that when you make your final decision, we know it's a difficult decision that you have to make. Uh, but we think we've done the right things in your community, and we're, we think it's a privilege to be here, serving your community, and we take that very seriously, so. So that's basically it, I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for all your time, um, I mean, you've heard, you've, you've read our submissions, you've heard from, uh, Mike Riordan, we want to be in Berlin, we want to continue to, to service Berlin, uh, we, we feel strongly, uh, about this community, and, uh, we are, we, we sincerely hope that we're given the privilege to continue to service, uh, the residents of Berlin. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Well, do you all have questions, first of all?
No.
No.
From the audience?
Bobby Wheeler, um, I worked with Franny, introduced me to this group a while ago, Franny Burke, which isn't available anymore, of course, but, uh, I worked with Michael, and, and they've done a great job at the Food Pantry, they've supported town, we went down and asked for stuff for recreation, they've done all kinds of stuff for this town. You know, you just have to ask, and they'll take area, and they were in line for quite a while for this, uh, and all they did it the right way, so. I think they should have a great consideration towards, you know, getting the next one in line. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Good.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate your time.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, we've got a few more minutes.
Uh, you can go right into the other...
Oh, we can?
Because they're simultaneously for seven point five.
All right, I wasn't sure. All right, then, um, Highland Commons, come on down. We'll take the same seats, you know, he was over there last time.
I was here last time, so.
I know.
Yeah, so, I'm confused, that's why.
You're in trouble.
That's what you get for missing.
All right, so we're happy to have you come in again tonight, and, um, would you like to take a few minutes to summarize, or?
Sure, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Andrew Upton for the applicant, and we have...
James Bagley Ollie for the developer.
Keith Leonard.
Jed Hayes.
I know you've received our letter of November second, I'll just give it a brief summary to get that on the record, um. Uh, there were a number of questions, issues raised at the last hearing, and we attempted to address them as best as we could, uh, I'll summarize that from my letter. First, uh, the landlord's contribution to the town of five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand per year is designed specifically to address public safety in a plan that included a liquor store of this size in the plaza. So, I believe any conjecture as to whether or not, uh, the impacts would be mitigated has already been dealt with in the development agreement. Contrary to, uh, some claims last week, um, if the other applicant got the license, that would not be a net zero impact on, of liquor licenses in the town, because they would be giving up their license, and because licenses are in such demand, I would assume immediately someone else is going to be applying for that, and that could very well be a less desirable operator in a less desirable location. So to say that if the other applicant were to get it, that that would be a net zero increase in liquor license is, I think, logically incorrect. There's been a lot of question about, uh, what happened to the previous license from Liquor Barn. And, as you know, it was a lengthy and complex process, but I'm not sure, uh, what the owner was saying about an illegal transfer. If there was any transfer, I think it would have been heard by this board or heard by the ABCC, um, and you would have had the opportunity to decide whether it was legal or illegal. But a reference to an illegal transfer, uh, is confusing at best, if not incorrect. Keith Leonard is a qualified applicant, he's owned liquor stores for over twenty years, he's got no relation to, uh, Liquor Barn. He was not involved in the process by which Liquor Barn failed to utilize his license. I, I don't think I can say it any more clearly, that these are two different applicants. He, he has absolutely no relation, he's a new guy, he's fully qualified in his own right, and, you know, the problems of the past, well, unfortunate, are the problems of the past, and have absolutely no bearing on this applicant. The manager of record, there was some concern, uh, last week that our manager of record said he would only be on premises ten hours a week. And I believe that is, that was a legitimate concern, but the reason for that is because it takes three months plus to build this thing. And we would not, and no business would, hire someone to be on premises forty hours a week while men and women are in there banging nails and putting up shelves. We have said that we will file a change of manager when the time comes, and, uh, Keith will hire a professional manager, who will be a Massachusetts resident, who will be fully qualified, who will be tips trained, and will be on-site forty-plus hours a week, just like he does at his current liquor stores. There were some questions about our floor plan, uh, I believe our floor plan is completely in compliance, it's to scale, it has measurements, the premises is actually in existence. Uh, I'm sure you're aware of the Dress Barn, that is a fully built-out building, the building next to it, uh, I believe has an actual floor, not a dirt floor, uh, and it's ready to go. We have spent some time talking to neighbors and butters and businesses, and we have determined that, uh, Highland will agree not to sell, uh, nip-sized bottles. There were some concerns that we were made aware of about litter and other stuff, and we heard them, we listened, and we're willing to do that. Under the legal standard, the number of existing licenses has to be considered. It's clear that Highland Commons was developed with a full-service liquor store in mind, and, as I said before, that the net zero argument just doesn't, does, does not fly. Factors that impact the neighbors, uh, so much mitigation has gone into this project, and into this project that includes a liquor store, that there should be zero negative impacts with the neighbors, in fact, one of the nearest neighbors came to the hearing last week to testify in favor. You heard the views of the inhabitants, uh, you've heard from the chair of the planning board, the chair of the economic development company, uh, committee, you're aware of the type of organization that we have, uh, the type of operation, we're talking about fifteen thousand square feet, ten thousand individual products, first-class finishes, a million-five of inventory, uh, and also the proximity to Market Basket, which the landlord feels is important, and the operator feels is important. The overall reputation of Mr. Leonard and his family is excellent, uh, he's had twenty years of great operation, he knows how to run a liquor store, he knows how to run a full-service, first-class, all-alcohol liquor store, uh, and he has the relationship and the trust of the landlord. The last thing I want to mention is that, uh, in Mr. Deena's letter, he said that if Highland Commons opens, it will impact his business negatively, he might have to go out of business. Uh, I just wanted to call to the board's attention that there is, uh, ABCC case law that says the issue of competition is one that should not be considered, whether determining whether or not a license should be granted or transferred. So I'll submit this for the record, and with that, we appreciate you listening, and we're glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I, I just wanted to say, um, you know, we appeared before this board and planning board, we've been here for fifteen, twenty years, basically. In, in addition to the mitigation payments in development agreement, we've paid seven figures to the town in individual payments, um, for community, open space, historic preservation, neighborhood preservation, we've, I think we've, we've been, um, we've been very, very good corporate citizens of the town, uh, of Berlin, and, uh, and, and we continue to be that way, I think, um, this board is, is new, all the up- previous selectmen had my cellphone number, James' cellphone number, everyone on the planning board has their cellphone number, every resident on Gates Pond Road has my cellphone number. We, we have, and I think if you talk to anybody on Gates Pond Road, they will tell you that we have always done what we've said, um, we've been very straightforward. Um, and I think it's important to note, um, that we really have not only, you know, tried to be good corporate citizens, but, but been that way. I mean, I, I don't think anybody, um, that has dealt with this over the last fifteen to twenty years can, can say anything different than that, I think that's an, I think that's an important factor. Just wanted to get it on the record.
And just following Jeb's point, uh, we did, uh, mention last week that the tax generation, the tax dollar generation from this store would be a significant multiple of the other applicant, and a, a major benefit for the town. We got those numbers from the town assessor, you know, we didn't hire a consultant, we didn't make those numbers up, those came directly from the town.
Okay. And does either of the board members have questions?
No.
Well...
We had a lot of time to think about the data and information.
Yes, I know, we have, we've spent the weekend reading the information, all of it. I, I really don't, um, you, you did say, I think, last week that there would, it would be, how many weeks until the store would be ready to open? Um, keeping in mind that after, it would be after the ABCC approval.
Nine, ninety to a hundred day, a hundred and twenty days is what we said, that was the range.
Okay, can we, can we cut that a little bit?
We're gonna, of course, to have it done in ninety days, that's, that's the goal.
Okay, I was just curious if...
Yep, and, and the store's, you know, the exterior's completely built, floor's completely built, you're just gonna get interior fitting and finishing, so, um...
But the high-degree finishes makes it a little, you got a lot of carpentry work and millwork and stuff that needs to go into that, better fixtures and those kind of things, so, takes a little longer.
What would be the impact to traffic around there, or the other business that, businesses that sit, would sit on either side of you, anything?
This project's been fully developed, to be completely retail and built out, it's gonna have no impact on the traffic. You just, it's just like having another tent space, currently Dress Barn's in there, Dress Barn's gonna go, and it would be like having another retail tent next to Dress Barn. You're gonna have people park in front, what you're actually gonna see is because it'll complement Market Basket, is that it's close enough to Market Basket to walk over, and if you see the parking field in front of Market Basket, people will probably either park in front of the liquor store and walk over, instead of trying to move their car, or walk over, so we're actually thinking less of a impact than you'd see from a different retail user. And this, this site's been fully, we, we, we did numerous traffic studies when we got this project approved, so we're not expecting any impact for traffic.
I did, uh, appreciate that you offered not to sell nips, is there still, individual cans can be purchased?
Well, we like to reserve the right to do individual beers, 'cause nowadays so many craft beers come in single bottles, I mean, you can get a Belgian beer that costs fourteen dollars for one.
Yeah, the cheapest ones are all singles.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, just a question, um, if you all are set, then I'm gonna open it up to the audience.
Okay.
Okay, is there any questions from the audience, questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, um. Do I hear a motion from the board?
Motion to approve Highland Commons for the liquor license.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, um, I, I would say just that I am anxious to see the entire Berlin side built out, and, um, it would be nice, this is a be- good beginning. Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
I can fill in, but if you'd sign.
Yep.
Yeah, please.
Chris?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would there be a vote on our application of RWJ?
Yes.
Okay, motion to deny RWJ.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You leaving us, Matt?
You need me to stay for anything?
No, I just wanted to say I'll see you Wednesday? All right, thank you. All right, I think the only thing left on the agenda is the administrative secretary job description. You guys have a chance to look at it?
The one that you sent today, no, I printed it and it's on my desk.
Okay, so you were looking at the wrong one?
I thought you did two, I thought you did the old one and the new one.
There was, but, so is there a different one, because I asked for yours, and you whizzed that along, but then you...
That was the old one.
Right, but then you had whizzed...
Done a draft.
Right, and so I made, I made comments on both of them.
And she had marked up both, but...
Yes, but it was a combination of the new one and the old one that you gave to us. The front page was the new one, and then after that, it was the old one.
Oh, I just gave you the pages of the comments that I made, I didn't stick them together. So I'm saying if there were three pages on one and two pages on the other, I gave you just the page I made comments on, I didn't give you the entire back.
Oh, so you didn't have any com- okay, so you didn't have to make comments on the old one?
Oh, okay, see, I wasn't sure, so I, I put comments on both of them, so I only gave you back...
Okay.
Comments, I, I didn't mean to stick them together as to...
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and I wasn't sure what was going on with that, so I did comments, and I will forward them to you, um, 'cause I did, I mean, I did do it, it's just...
All right.
There are enough, but you probably don't want to go over, like, line by line tonight, so I will send them over to you, and you guys can both take a look at what I...
One of the questions you had on, on the new one, well, the only part that you gave me, was, is there another word for secretarial services?
Admin.
Yeah, you can just say administrative, you can take all that out.
Okay.
And that's, I kind of...
Yeah, that just dated it, yeah.
Okay.
Knowing that she had already done that, I scratched on that.
Okay, all right.
Dated it, it's kind of sexist.
Oh, I, I know, but, uh, I mean, it was funny, because all, e- even the one that I was basing it on...
Had it.
Had it.
I know.
And, um, I don't know exactly how old it was, but...
No, sorry about that, I did, I just gave you the comments from both.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, then you did do what you needed to do.
And I'll send you over the comments.
Okay, all right, and then we'll, we'll look at it again next meeting.
Yep.
All right, good.
You're all lonely now, Peter, you're the only one left.
Are you lonely?
You, you look lonely out there.
No, you look closer. He's overwhelmed, he's like, ah, crap.
Look at these ladies, soccer, I mean, uh...
Voluntold, Peter, voluntold.
Who's, who's gonna be my liaison ladies?
I am.
I don't mean the EDC ladies on the movie slash EDC ladies.
All three of us.
She can still do it.
EDC, EDC.
Easy peasy. Easy peasy lemon squeezy.
Have to schedule a little phone call.
Okay.
All right, so, other new business, um, we're going to have a budget kickoff meeting, six P M., no.
Yes.
Yeah, six P M.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, November fifteenth. Um, I am meeting with the people involved in finishing up the curatorial building, and we're meeting tomorrow. I believe it's at one o'clock, um, at the eighteen-seventy. So hopefully good news after that. Um, is there any other new business that anybody wants to share?
Did you get any feedback from Item Man to come to our meeting?
No, he, he didn't answer.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, and I drafted a note to, uh, sign in the tenor, sign, sign in the center of town man, uh, the Berlin Lions Club.
Everybody's a man.
Person.
You don't know, you don't know.
Actually, he is, Tom Door.
Okay.
Tom Door, so, uh, just sent him a note to see if we could get up additional reminders...
Okay.
For our coffee.
All right, um, anything else?
Um, I just would like to get moving on the TA stuff, so I don't know if you'd like me to start, um, making calls to the, the list that the folks gave us, to see if they can send us stuff, or how you would like to... We'd like to start getting the committee around, or how you'd like to go forward.
Yeah, well, I think we probably need to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
And also the fire chief.
Yeah.
Yes.
They needs to be put on an agenda for discussion, um...
Yeah, I sent out the, uh...
As far as an update and...
Yeah, I sent out the package to, to the three of them today, so we'll see if it has any influence on their proposals.
Okay.
So, I'll give them a time limit to get back to me by...
Was there just two?
Three, Badge Quest, uh, Lady Kim, that I can't remember where she's from, and a gentleman, Jeff, that I can't remember where he's from.
Okay.
So hopefully three, I mean, we have Badge Quest in hand, waiting on the other two.
Okay, all right, well, why don't we put that one on the next agenda, which, gosh, is it the... All right, well, why don't we put that one on the next agenda, which, gosh, is it the, uh...
Look at your calendar.
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth, okay, I was gonna say the twenty-ninth, but that's not so far away.
Yeah, 'cause we're not meeting next week, so the nineteenth.
Right, so it is the nineteenth.
All right, I'll see what I can get back be- uh, between now and then.
Okay. Good?
Yeah.
All right. All right, well...
You done?
If there's nothing else, then I would... Oh, question.
Yes, is there no selectmen's meeting next week? Just coffee with the selectmen?
Right, coffee with the selectmen.
Where is it?
Eighteen-seventy house.
Eighteen-seventy Town Hall, and it's at...
One of the buildings, one of the floors, first floor, six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Thank you. That was our admin.
There you go.
Thank you. All right, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.